Welcome, I'd like to call this October fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen council meeting to order, if you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance?
.................................................................. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Coyne.
Here.
Hilbert.
Here.
Colasar.
Here.
You need any minutes?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of September twenty-second, two thousand and fourteen, as prepared and submitted by the clerk, be approved.
Second.
Discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven zero.
Reports of standing committees, the Finance Committee met prior to council and will meet again prior to the next council meeting. Health, Safety, Sanitation Committee, Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President, nothing to report, but I'm working to get a meeting scheduled of the Health Committee sometime after the next council meeting.
Thank you. Public Properties Committee, Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mr. President, Public Properties has a meeting tentatively scheduled for Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, at five thirty.
Thank you. Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Mr. President, Special Legislation Committee has a meeting scheduled for Wednesday, October twenty-ninth, I believe, at five thirty.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. President, Streets and Sidewalk had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, at this time we have nothing scheduled.
Thank you. Water and Tires Committee, Mr. Colasar?
Thank you, Mr. President, nothing reported this time.
Thank you. Request for council action, we have several for Finance, we have fourteen-one-ninety-eight healthcare renewal, fourteen-one-ninety-nine, SPCA two thousand and fifteen, MLO Law Services, fourteen-two-hundred budget amendments, fourteen-two-oh-one increased PO two thousand and fourteen, ten-twenty-two HSH construction, fourteen-two-oh-two amending ordinance one-twenty-six fourteen, Securtech, fourteen-two-oh-three expenditure over fifteen thousand Moncho's Ford Streets, fourteen-two-oh-four increased PO two thousand and fourteen, fourteen-fifteen Jedco Inc., fourteen-two-oh-five resolution accepting amounts and rates of budget commission, fourteen-two-oh-six increased PO two thousand and fourteen, ten-sixty-eight Porture and Sun, fourteen-two-oh-seven increased PO two thousand and fourteen, five-seventy-five Wingford Tire Systems, fourteen-two-oh-eight expenditure over fifteen thousand dollars for frame construction for the streets, fourteen-two-oh-nine increased PO two thousand and fourteen, seventeen-twenty-five Mid-Ohio Concrete Engineering, fourteen-two-ten pavement of South Court Street, emergency water line and pavement, fourteen-two-eleven accept easements for Westminster Road, various parcels, fourteen-two-twelve accepting two easements for Lake Road Phase Two, fourteen-two-thirteen fact finding report for OPBA Communications Division, fourteen-two-fourteen amending salaries and balances code thirty-one-oh-two B nine and thirty-one-oh-five cable TV production assistant, and one item for Public Properties Committee, fourteen-two-fifteen public restroom facility, landscape fountain, and mowing. Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hamel?
Thank you, Mr. President, on October seventh, we had a award three and four meeting down at Ellicanovan School, and a number of the concerns that were raised were posting the signs in the tree lawns or the right-of-way people that are parking their vehicles in yards instead of on the pavement, as well as unleashed dogs running at large on public properties. So we posted those regulations, the next morning, on the city website actually dawned it, and I also talked with Keith, and we're gonna put one of those probably on each of the utility bills for the upcoming months, and then what we'll probably do is take a little break and then try to do it again, repeat that in the spring, because there seems to be a lull during the winter months with some of those things. And then this past Saturday, October eleventh, Governor John Kasich and Lieutenant Governor Mary Taylor came up to visit Medina again, the governor also made a point to go down and visit Castle Noel, 'cause he was quite a fan of the Cousin Eddie's RV, so he went down first to see that, and then was invited to take a ride down the slide from the Christmas story inside Castle Noel, and he ended up in the gift shop and bought a moose mug to take home with him, so again, great exposure for the city, I'm sure he'll spread the word once he gets back down there for the folks to come up and see what the city has to offer. Saturday afternoon, a friend of mine came up from Columbus that I went to elementary school with, and he was meeting his mother here from lunch, his mother's still in Brunswick, and he spent about, he was waiting for me to get done with the governor, so he spent about three hours on the square there, observing the Halloween Harvest Festival, the farmer's market, and just the activity, people going up and buying produce, carrying bags away, people going to the farmer's market, stopping to eat, people stopping to eat, then going to the farmer's market or the Halloween Festival, and he shared with me, sometimes I think we lose the perspective from being here and so close to it, he shared with me that he's lived in probably six or so of the suburbs, some pretty well-to-do suburbs in Columbus area, but he's never seen a community like this where people come to the downtown, and the downtown has things to draw people together, families for various ages, the grandkids, the kids, and the parents all there together enjoying themselves, and just couldn't say enough to compliment the city on all the positive things that were going on. And then the last is a kind of an announcement for the future, the Veterans Day Concert is planned for Monday, November tenth, at seven PM at the Saint Francis Church, the community band will play at that concert, there's parking available not only at the church, but the owners of the property at six hundred E Smith Road and six-twenty E Smith Road have authorized their lots to be used for overflow parking, and there is no cost or tickets required to attend the Veterans Day Concert, but they do ask that the attendees bring a non-perishable item to support the Saint Vincent de Paul Society. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Durham, Director of Finance?
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a few things, one is a reminder for all the residents at home, the, we have an LST levy renewal on at the upcoming election in November, it's how we pay for the ambulance service for the city, it's a renewal, so there's no increase in the tax rate, and it's important because the state is phasing out the exemption, by doing a renewal, we preserve that exemption, it's no increase, and we preserve the exemption this way, if anybody has any questions, feel free to call in and we'll tell you whatever you need to know about it. There's a budget hearing coming up next Wednesday, I know everyone's excited about that, and there's a couple of things on the agenda later, budget amendments and accepting amounts and rates that I'll address when we get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Huber, Law Director?
Thank you, Mr. President, I have no report.
Thank you. Chief Beriducci, Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President, I have no report.
Thank you. Ms. Rice, Economic Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President, just wanted to mention some of the new businesses that are coming in within the next couple of months or have recently moved into the city, and I also wanted to thank Jonathan Mendel and Dan Gladish for all their work with helping these businesses through signed permits and zoning and building renovations and inspections, but we have Bella Sorrella's Hair Salon and Vintage Soul both moving into the arcade, One Lucky Dog Bakery just completed an expansion also right by the arcade, the H2 Wine Bar will be coming in November, Something's Popping, which is a popcorn shop on the south side of the square, will be opening probably also middle of November, Lagerhead's Microbrewery, Sand and Lace Fine Arts and Gift Gallery, which will be moving into the town center, Tokyo Inc. on North Court Street, High Voltage Indoor Go-Kart Racing, Alien Vacation, Three-D Mini Golf, which is another attraction at Castle Noel, and then also Dorman Legacy Advisors, those are just to name a few. Also, I've been working with the Main Street Medina Business Development Committee on a visitors brochure for Medina, which hopefully will be done when the visitors and restroom open over there on the square, so hopefully by candlelight luck, and that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mendel, Economic Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President, I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Chief Peeler, Fire Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President, this past Saturday, we held our annual fire safety open house at Station Number One, and I'm happy to say it was another great success, we had over three hundred and fifty attendees, the kids had a lot of fun, a lot of education, and I'd like to thank Beavers, Giant Eagle, Fire Dex, Sandridge Foods, The Corkscrew Slune, and Sears, and of course Lifeline for all their support to make it all happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, Recreation Center Director?
Thank you, Mr. President, just a couple of items, first of all, I would like to acknowledge some really great staff and patrons of the rec, we had a nine-one-one call in our fitness room a few weeks ago with a patron who had a heart attack, the staff responded and had the AED to him in less than thirty seconds, Kurt Garing provided chest compressions until ST arrived and continued until they were all set up, I would also like to commend the schools, Word of Education President Tom Cahillan for performing chest compressions when Kurt needed rest during the CPR, it was a combined effort, everything worked like clockwork to keep him alive, I really appreciate the job that ST does day in and day out, they're constantly helping us with everything we do when it comes to emergencies, the response time and quick actions absolutely helped save this individual, and so great job to everyone who assisted on that save. I'd like to also mention the, the rec center would like to thank the community who came out to the Halloween Festival this past weekend on Friday and Saturday, as the mayor mentioned, the weather was perfect for a fall festival and everyone enjoyed all the festivities we offered, I also wanted to thank Maureen Dowell and our program department for all their efforts to make this such a great event, and to thank all the volunteers who also helped make this so memorable, there were way too many sponsors to list them all, but I want to give a special thanks to Medina Hospital for sponsoring the event for the last four years, Main Street Medina and the businesses for their assistance, and Discount Drug Month for all their donations too, truly special thanks to the Browns for beating the Steelers and ending the entire weekend with an overall feeling of triumph and jubilation, and lastly, our next rec advisory board meeting will be this Thursday, October sixteenth, at seven thirty AM at the rec center. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gladys, Building Official?
Thank you, Mr. President, the Building Department in the first nine months of the year issued a total of one thousand seventy-nine building permits, of which eight hundred and twenty-five were for residential, two hundred and fifty-four for commercial, this is close to equaling the total number of permits for all of last year, the large number of new permits is good news for the community, it means that throughout the city, there has been over a thousand investments made in upgrading and improving existing commercial and residential properties, there has been eight residential demolition permits issued to date, three for houses, five for garages, negative news, there's been a total of sixty-three residential foreclosure notifications submitted to the city, in two thousand and thirteen it was a total of seventy-eight. That ends my report.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, City Engineer?
Thank you, this past Friday, we opened two projects that we've been working, opened bids for two projects that we've been working on for quite some time, the Lake Road Reconstruction Phase Two, which is the section between Lafayette Road and Smith Road, and a water line replacement, which the city's obtained a state zero interest loan to construct, we're reviewing those bids now and expect to award them at the next Port of Control meeting, I can report though that both of them, the apparent low bidders came in well within the budget authorized by council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pacoli, Service Director?
Thank you, Mr. President, the leaf season is upon us, I was surprised at the number of piles that I saw throughout the city, Street Department had sent out one back truck, and will continue that effort as we're testing equipment, volumes, as volumes increase, the equipment will as well to accommodate that, please remember to rake the leaves to the curb, not into the street, we repeat that every year, but it's critical to our infrastructure, our storm sewer specifically, as the program progresses, we start at the northwest section of town, proceed to the northeast, and then southeast and southwest in a clockwise fashion, so they'll be updating some on the website, as well as the leaf hotline, which is seven-two-five-five-three-two-three, that's three-three-oh-seven-two-five-five-three-two-three. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor appointments, we have Paul Black for Planning Commission for Term Expenditure twelve thirty-one sixteen.
Move to approve the mayor's appointment, second.
Any discussion on the mayor's appointment? Clerk, please call the roll?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven zero.
Mayor says communications and petitions, we have two of them, liquor permit not to object to the issuance of a new D-five permit to PJM Enterprises LTD doing business as PJM is at one nineteenth Public Square.
Move to object, second.
Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven zero.
A motion to approve a public record training designee, to approve designee Clerk of Council Kathy Patton to attend the September twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen Ohio Auto states certified public record training sponsored by the Rogers City Council, on behalf of the council members Coyne, Simpson, Rose, Colasar, Lamb, and Mayor Dennis Hamel.
Move to approve, second.
Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll?
Coyne?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven zero.
On finished business, we have none, introduction of visitors, members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city, doing a portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors, all comments will be directed to the chair and a reasonable time of approximately five minutes will be imposed, if there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson, speakers should approach the front white microphone and state their name and address, so can be entered into the minutes, members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting, as determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present, is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Yes.
My name is Heather Short, I live at, on North Court Street near Medina, I just wanted to say thank you to bringing some light to the neighborhood renewal program, giving the homeowners the voice, allowing us to really take pride in our neighborhoods again, I just really appreciate Mr. Lamb for bringing this to life and allowing us to have some action, that we feel like we can actually do something and make a difference, and bring back, like the mayor said, that pride, that you can walk through the town and enjoy yourself, and not feel as though, you know, you see all these homes that are condemned, and you really just take pride in the old neighborhoods, so just thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council? International consideration of ordinances and resolutions, ordinance one sixty-three fourteen, and ordinance authorizing the purchase of one rear motor Packer body from the National Joint Powers Alliance for the Sanitation Department.
Move to approve, second.
Question, Mr. Pacoli?
Thank you, Mr. President, when a vehicle is up for replacement with respect to service, the Vehicle Maintenance Department will look at that vehicle, a new garbage truck in this instance would be a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, this application, we, we're confident that we can replace the twenty-five cubic yard Packer body at a cost of seventy-six thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and thirty-six cents, which is a savings on existing cabin chassis, so we're hopeful that we can get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on ordinance?
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Ornance one sixty-three dash fourteen passes seven zero.
Ordnance one sixty-four dash fourteen, ordinance authorizing an increase of the expenditure to Zashen Rich Co. LPA from twenty-five thousand to thirty-three thousand for the law apartment.
Move to approve, second.
Discussion, Mr. Huber?
John Delino from Zashen Rich Law Firm represented the city Medina in the negotiations with the police unions, these, this work has been more extended this year, this round, because of fact finding and the, the fact that the dispatch unit's been separated out, so he's had more time, as a result, we're requesting for an increase so that his fees can be paid.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll?
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Ornance one sixty-four dash fourteen passes seven zero.
Ordnance one sixty-five dash fourteen, ordinance authorizing an increase of the expenditure to Lake County Sewer Company from fifteen thousand to thirty thousand for the Street Department.
Move to approve, second.
Discussion, Mr. Pacoli?
Thank you, Mr. President, in an effort to continue our campaign to repair our areas of our storm system that are in need of attention through a process that we use as grounding, we would like to increase this PO and continue the same with our vendor.
Thank you. Further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Ornance one sixty-five dash fourteen passes seven zero.
Ordnance one sixty-six fourteen, ordinance authorizing an expenditure not to exceed twenty-seven thousand dollars to Paradise Tree Farm for the Parks Department, fall tree purchase and planting.
Move to approve, second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The Emergency Clause has been requested, I move to add it this time?
My second includes the Emergency Clause.
Discussion on the Emergency Clause and the ordinance, Mr. Wright?
Mr. President, thank you, this ordinance is for council to approve parks to use Paradise Tree Farms, which is a local nursery for purchasing a portion of the trees for our fall tree planting, they were also low bidder for the trees installation portion of the project, they have planted many trees for the city Medina, and we look forward to working with them on this project.
The Emergency Clause has been requested in order to secure the nursery stock and to begin planting while the weather still permits. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the Emergency Clause and ordinance? Clerk, please call the roll on the Emergency Clause.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven zero.
Clerk, please call the roll on the ordinance?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Ornance one sixty-six dash fourteen passes seven zero.
Ordnance one sixty-seven fourteen, ordinance amending ordinance number two-oh-eight thirteen, passed December ninth, two thousand and thirteen, amendments to the two thousand and fourteen budget.
Move to approve, second.
Discussion, Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President, the two projects here that we discussed, the finance actually the project's already approved, but this is the mechanics to pay for.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance one sixty-seven dash fourteen passes seven zero.
Resolution one sixty-eight fourteen, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission, authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Move to approve, second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The Emergency Clause has been requested, I move to add it this time?
My second includes the Emergency Clause.
Any discussion on the Emergency Clause and the resolution, Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President, this is the next step in the state's setup for the budget process that we have to follow, we sent the tax budget a while ago, this is certifying what we got back from the county Budget Commission, the Emergency Clause is requested because there's a deadline we have to meet.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on the Emergency Clause?
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven zero.
Clerk, please call the roll on the Resolution?
Coyne?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Resolution one sixty-eight dash fourteen passes seven zero.
Ordnance one sixty-nine fourteen, ordinance accepting the report and recommendations of the Fact Finder for the Ohio Patrolman's Benevolent Association for the Police Communications Division.
Move to approve, second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The Emergency Clause has been requested, I move to add it this time?
My second includes the Emergency Clause.
Discussion on the Emergency Clause and the ordinance, Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President, the Fact Finder's report was dated October eighth, the reason for the Emergency Clause is council has seven days upon receipt, I think we received it the day later, so we need the Emergency Clause for that regard, the Fact Finder followed pretty much basically what we did with the police officers and police sergeants, with the exception of they started the wages and the healthcare changes, because we're this far into the year, October first, as opposed to retroactively, so other than that, it mirrors what we did for the other two unions and what council also did for the non-union employees, and our attorney, Mr. Delino, is recommending that council accept this report.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the Emergency Clause and the ordinance? Clerk, please call the roll on the Emergency Clause?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven zero.
Clerk, please call the roll on the ordinance?
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Ordinance 169-14 passes 7-0.
Council comments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Simpson.
Thank you. I just want to expound a little bit on what Mr. Wright mentioned about the staff at the rec center assisting this gentleman that suffered a life-threatening heart attack. And I talk quite often about the safety forces in Medina. We're all so proud of them. And I've always said that the residents of our community are fortunate to have, when it comes to medical issues, you die on 911, your chances are you're gonna have somebody at your door within one or two minutes, whether that be a police officer, a fireman, or LST. But in saying that, the other part of the puzzle is a lot of public buildings, and not almost all of them, public buildings in our community have AEDs, this automatic defibrillator when somebody's heart stops from a heart attack. The staff at the rec center, on numerous occasions, this isn't the first time, but on numerous occasions, has come to the assistance of somebody that has collapsed. And in this case, the gentleman's heart did stop, a young man, a young man, in his 50s. That's young to me. But with the staff at the rec center, we met with them last week. Just can't say enough about the training that they, ongoing training that they do to familiarize themselves with the equipment and the procedures to handle the equipment and the situations that arise, whether it be a heart attack, a seizure, bleeding, whatever it may be. The staff at the rec center is always right on top of things. And I can honestly say, the physicians at the Cleveland Clinic Medina Hospital Emergency Room agree. If it would not have been, and this incident would not have been for the staff immediately starting CPR and using the defibrillator, this gentleman most likely would not have survived. And again, I just want, and the only reason I'm bringing this up is because I just want to keep reminding the residents of our community how fortunate they are. This is not the case in other places in our county, and definitely not the case nationwide, where you've got somebody that's trained responding to an emergency, whether it be a life-threatening emergency or a non-life-threatening emergency within minutes. But when it's a life-threatening emergency, it really makes a difference. And I am proud, and I'm sure everybody on the dais here is proud of the staff at the rec center, and they deserve accolades. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Do you have some council comments?
Mr. President, thank you very much. I have a couple of things. First of all, I want to remind everybody one more time that on November 7th, at Waymouth Country Club, Faith in Action will be holding its great fundraiser for Dancing With The Stars. And, you know, we teach our children, you may not be a professional tennis player, but you could be a good tennis player if you practice, and you practice, and you practice. And I've always believed that. This week, I'm taking my 10th dancing lesson and my two-and-a-half-minute dance, and I'm not quite certain that my practicing is paying off quite as well as I would have expected. But it's a great fundraiser. It's a good thing for the community. Hope a lot of folks decide to turn out. Just echoing somewhat what the mayor said, I was up on the square to get some things at the farm market on the weekend, and the event on the square was absolutely phenomenal. I was there on Friday night, and I had to go back on Saturday to get some things at the farm market and walked around. And it was not only phenomenal, but it was colorful and exciting and noisy, and it was full of life. And one thing we did here in Medina was we didn't just restore the downtown and turn it into a museum, but there was always an understanding that we didn't want a museum. We wanted a place that was alive and full of people, spending money, having a good time, and just living their, living their life in a wonderful place. And while I was there, I also had the opportunity to stop in the firehouse to see our friend Roger Smalley, who's just doing a phenomenal job. And I looked at the floor, the new floor that's been put in the museum at the engine house. And, you know, that's a real asset to that facility. And there were a lot of people that were up at the farm market and the Halloween event, and they were in the firehouse looking at, you know, the history of this community and what we've done here that has just been done so well. One other, two things. Actually, one, and I'm embarrassed to say this, but I don't know where to get the flyer. But if you eat at Bob Evans tomorrow between 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM, you can, you'll be contributing some money to the community fundraiser for the SPCA.[1689.84]